Well, good evening, everyone. Nice to have you here. This is a very, another proud moment for us. Our first school committee meeting at our brand-new Higgins Middle School. And it's great to be in our new library. We just had to yell at our superintendent to take his coffee out because only water is allowed. And, uh, but this is very exciting. Um, we intend to have all future meetings here. Uh, potentially an occasional meeting, uh, depending on the use of the building. We could be meeting at City Hall as well, but we're hopeful and intend to have the meetings here in this beautiful building and utilize this wonderful space. Uh, so today is September 13th, 2016. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by the PB School Committee's Recording Secretary, Magenta Harris, and we are on PAT. The matters listed on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'd like to start off, if everybody could please rise for a moment of silence, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Herb Levine for some special introductions.
A coffeeless superintendent. Every now and again, we remind ourselves as to why it is that we do the jobs that we do, and, uh, we do the jobs that we do because of kids like Logan Lemazny and John Hogan and the rest of the 6,000 students that are in our school system. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce two wonderful students, exemplary students from the West School. Thank you to Tom Canaccio for, uh, giving me some information on these fine young people who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Logan Lemazny is in the fifth grade and, uh, at the West School, and she enjoys playing basketball and soccer. As a fourth grader last year, she was an important member of the undefeated West Girls Championship Basketball Team. Of course, Tom would put that in there. She also plays AAU basketball and club soccer. Logan has a younger brother in first grade, and her sister has just started kindergarten at the West. Logan excels academically in school. She is an avid reader, has a love of writing, especially fiction, and is an excellent math student. One of her favorite things to do is to travel around the country with her dad Steve, attending baseball tournaments. Logan has many friends and will always help out the students and other kids in need. Maybe that's the best thing that we've said about Logan. And Logan is a natural leader and is a role model for other students. We'd also like to welcome John Hogan, also a fifth, uh, fifth grader at the West School. And as a fourth grader, John played on the West Boys Basketball Team last year, but John's favorite sport is baseball. He is a catcher and an outfielder. He played two majors on the Nationals team and plays AAU baseball as well. John's younger brother is in the second grade at the West. Academically, John excels in mathematics and writing. He participated in the West School Musical, where he especially enjoys performing on stage. John has many friends at the West and is always kind to others. Again, maybe the best thing that we say about John. Especially younger students, John is a natural leader and a friend to all. It's my pleasure to introduce John Hogan and Logan Lemazny to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kids, the mayor has bought you each a car.
Well, congratulations, Logan and John. I happen to know both families, wonderful families that are heavily involved in City of PB in a variety of ways, and I think these are two young people that are going to be carrying a lot of love in the future. I always love listening when we do bring some students from different elementary schools to meet with, have them be a part of our school committee meeting and do the Pledge of Allegiance because there's so many talented, wonderful students that are doing so well. And it's great to be able to meet some of them and hear a little bit of what's taking place in our school. So, congratulations to the both of you, and, um, next year you'll be right here at this beautiful school. So, very happy to have you all with us and the parents as well. So now we'll go to our agenda. We have approval of minutes from the last meeting, October, excuse me, August 23rd, 2016, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Okay. We have, the motion was made for approval by Mr. Rosengold, seconded by Mr. Hockman. We'll have a roll call vote on the minutes, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Alentio?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of bills. We have three warrants. Mrs. Coughlin?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3182 dated September 13th in the amount of $406,276.54, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Coughlin for approval of warrant 3182, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Mrs. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Alentio?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3183 dated September 13th, 2016, in the amount of $48,786.35, subject to audit.
Second. Okay. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Coughlin for approval of warrant 3183, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Mrs. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Alentio?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3169 dated August 30th, 2016, in the amount of $12,000, subject to audit.
Second. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Coughlin for approval of warrant C, number 3169, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosengold?
Yes.
Mrs. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Alentio?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is continuing business. First topic, the MSBA Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
Well, we're here.
Yes.
And it has really been an incredible experience, and as you can see, it's an incredible product. Uh, one of the biggest things is, and I encourage you to chime in, Mr. Mayor, on Saturday we'll be having the actual ribbon cutting for the building. Uh, it's going to be, there's going to be a ceremony at 11:00, and then after that, the public will be invited to come in, the public's invited to come in and see the building and to look at all of the new incredible initiatives that will be, uh, taking place in this building. The technology is phenomenal. It's an absolutely beautiful building, and most importantly, the students are still learning from incredible teachers who do everything possible to make an education just outstanding for each of the students. Everything here is, is a tool for them to help with the students and to give them the opportunity to enjoy a lot of the technology that, that now exists and, and so that these students will go forward and invent new things. But the most important thing that takes place in this building has been going on at all the PB schools for a long time. It's just nice that now they have a lot of the equipment that they really, really can use and, uh, enjoy, and it's, it's a beautiful place and it's, it's got a really nice feel to it. I was lucky enough to come in on the first day of school, and it's always fun to see kids' faces on the first day of school, but today, I'm sorry, that day, um, the sixth grade is where, honestly, they were depressed, but they, they were in the building. But to see the seventh and eighth grade students and talk to them, that was most enjoyable. And to hear what they had to say about the building, they just kept, they, they just kept saying, "This is incredible. This is awesome. This is really cool." So that was, that was a lot of fun. So I thank you again. Uh, the next school building committee meeting will take place this Thursday here in the library. And at that point, just so people know, the Higgins School Building Committee is continuing on because this building is really phase one of a much bigger project. Phase two is demolition and the creation of new athletic fields, and anybody who comes on site sees all of that work taking place may not realize how much more has to be done, but it's, it's a lot of work that needs to be done underground and a lot of work that's going to take a while because we'll be, we'll be creating replication of the fields that this building currently sits on so that we'll have more opportunities for recreation, and that's going to be very nice in itself. So there is still a lot of work on that committee, and it's really going very well.
Great. And just to add to that, Mrs. Dunn, thank you. Uh, yes, the, we are having our formal ribbon cutting grand opening ceremony Saturday. We are having a ceremony at 11:00. It's open to the public. Uh, we should have a number of state officials here, representatives from the Mass School Building Authority, some of our state legislators, and I think a large contingent of PB elected officials, department heads, school officials. I think it's going to be a wonderful ceremony. Then following that, it's an open house from 12:00 to 2:00, again, open to all people to come and see all the residents, all the taxpayers, to see how the beautiful building that we've created for our, for future generations. Uh, we notified the senior senator, the library, we tried to, uh, get notices out as best we can. All of our elementary school students and middle school students will be getting notices in their backpacks to go home later this week, and we hope to have a great crowd to celebrate, uh, really this momentous moment for the city of PB to show how serious we take education and, uh, indicated by the investment that we've made here as a community. And I think all of us should be greatly proud of what we've accomplished, and we'll speak more to that on Saturday. One note I did have, I didn't want to mention, it was terrific yesterday, I was in Gloucester at a conference with some business leaders, and, um, a couple of people came up to me and asked about our new school and heard about the great investment and the great work that's being done in our school system. Um, it's very gratifying and rewarding to hear that others, other communities are talking about PB. There was a lady from Beverly and a gentleman from Gloucester both commented on, they'd heard rumors about the incredible school that we have here, so it was terrific. And I know there's a lot more work to be done. Obviously, the site is still an active site as the demolition is taking place next door. That'll take place for the next couple of months, hopefully to be completed, uh, the end of October, beginning of November. And then there'll, there'll still be the need for some additional site work as we get the, uh, former site of the old Higgins ready for some fields and, uh, some ball fields and open space, so that'll be taking place over the next year as well. So still a lot to be done, but things are going very well. Mr. Hockman, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you. Um, we're a wonderful building. It's, it's delightful to be here. I was also here a little earlier and seen some students, and it is great to see the staff and the morale and everything else that's just uptick from the old Higgins building. But I did have a question through the chair, through Mrs. Dunn. In regard to the secondary and tertiary phases of this project, are there, uh, is there any funds or are there going to be any improvements to any of the walking routes in and around the Higgins area? Particularly Perkins, you know, where there's no sidewalk on one side and there's no curb cuts on some of the, I think Perkins and Palmer has no curb cut and there's maybe Ethel and Fay as well.
Actually, under the terms of the, um, you know, because it's an MSBA project, we live it into a certain perimeter of the facility as far as the improvements with the sidewalks, and those would be outside of our perimeter. It's a good point to bring up, um, you know, with, with needs throughout the city as far as distances from the schools for curb cuts, et cetera. But I do know that onsite, um, some folks have noticed that some of the sidewalks haven't been completed. They're working diligently and around the clock to get the sidewalks onsite completed. And on the King Street side, there are several improvements that are still being worked on. They're right at the perimeter. Um, it's to encourage walking, and one of the areas is the path from Irving Street to King Street. There are several spots that still, uh, need crosswalks, uh, curb cuts, new, new sidewalks, and those are all being worked on, but at that far, you know, there's nothing in conjunction with this project at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Perhaps, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, study or get a cost for sidewalks on Perkins Street, curb cuts all up and down Perkins Street. I think all of us have heard the wonderful things that are going on in this building. One of the hiccups that occurred and I don't think was unexpected is the traffic problems in the beginning of school, and I think that that's normal for a new building with this number of people in it. But I do, would like to encourage walking. Um, I think we all would. I think, um, Mr. Rosengold with, uh, his health committee would encourage students walking to school, and, uh, it is a cost, sidewalks are costly. I know it's a city, or it's a city function, but perhaps we can, I'd like to make a motion to explore it, maybe we can put it into building grounds and just maybe prioritize it somehow. Um, it would alleviate some of the traffic congestion that takes place in and around the Higgins property and would encourage just healthier living for some of our students. So, so.
All in favor of the motion? Any comments? Mr. Nica?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Hockman through the chair of the committee, also with the new memorial fund going up there on Emerson Park. It might make sense to have that as well, um, so that there actually handicap access as well, you know, with the curb cuts and the ramps there.
Great. I think we should, yeah, we could tackle those issues in building grounds. Okay. So Dunn, do you want?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, one thing I wanted to ask because of your experience as a city councilor, is it something we need to refer to the council? I know they often deal with the sidewalks and the road questions in the neighborhood. They've worked, they've worked closely with us on some of the traffic issues, um, but as far as like an infrastructure change, I don't know, I don't know what the proper protocol would be. I mean, you could, you could come out a building and grounds with a recommendation in that direction, but I think it's a good idea. And just as an aside, one of the things people might really be interested in, in the front of the building, there are a lot of, um, brand-new bicycle racks. They, they look like modern, uh, they're gorgeous. And, uh, they're filled every day, which is really nice to see. Um, it's, it's a change, and it's a nice change, and, uh, the students who are riding their bikes are, uh, making a very good difference. The traffic, you know, it's, it's really a problem because it's such a congested site to begin with. Once, once things open up in the old, I'll call it the old area, things will be a little bit better. We are hoping that, you know, people will follow, follow the path, follow the guidelines, um, have the kids ready to get out of the car as soon as they pull up to the drop-off area, leave from the drop-off area, um, listen to the police officers when they, when they're directing you. Those are just common courtesies, but some of that has caused quite a bit of trouble in the parking lot. So, it, it should, it should change. People are encouraging car pools as well, and as the year goes on, the novelty of, of getting a ride to school will change, and some people will start to take the buses and things like that. But, um, as far as the sidewalks, it is a good idea because, uh, we really do want people to walk. This, this is a, this is a safe neighborhood. It's a good spot to come to school, and, uh, there are a lot of walkers from different areas, but if we can expand it and get more on their feet, we help everybody.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, if I may, just in closing on this, Dr. Canaccio was here for the West School. His predecessor, Susan Cassidy, applied for him to see the grant and improve the walking paths to and around the West School, perhaps for some of the kids, Professor Rivers filed at the West School on that grant, and we could tap into that and get their funds available because it would encompass a distance comparable to, I think, the distance that that project went through from the school, so.
Just a, a couple of comments on that. Um, the city council certainly would be, um, a body that we need to communicate with and, and certainly we're, as a group, school committee, allowed to make any recommendations or send any requests over to the city council and ultimately to the mayor's office. I can tell you that, um, you know, because this is an active site for the next year, there's going to be a lot of trucks coming and going as we remove dirt and, and other material from the old Higgins, that, um, Perkins Street and Allen's Lane are set to be paved at the conclusion of this work. So, uh, we felt it was best to kind of wait until the project is at its completion and then do the paving. Uh, so I think you'll see that over the next year or two, depending on the timing of, of that construction completion. Um, but also hand in hand with the paving is, uh, some sidewalk work as well. Uh, we paved Washington Street last year, uh, we paved a portion out front here, but the whole Perkins Street and all of Allen's Lane will be paved, and, uh, that's, um, set for, as I said, their completion. Uh, but certainly I think Emerson Park is going to be going through a bit of a transformation uh, over the next couple of years with the construction of the Public Safety Memorial, which is set for November, uh, completion in November, and then also some, uh, features that we have coming to Emerson Park as well. I've always considered Emerson Park this area the central park of the city, uh, in collaboration with the, the fields and the school that we have here today. So I think a lot of work needs to be done to continue to make this a pretty special area and a wonderful neighborhood. And, uh, certainly I think all of us share the warm feelings to the neighbors that had to put up with a lot and are still continuing to put up with a lot of trucks and some noise and things of that nature, and, uh, the neighborhood's been wonderful to work with. So I think that's important, and we continue that. So I think, um, we can have some meetings, maybe make some recommendations that can be forwarded to the city council, uh, the mayor's office, and the Department of Public Works and try to get some of that work done. Okay? Okay, so the next item on the continued business is for kids only, before and after school program updates. Dr. Levine?
I do, thank you. Um, we've had a series of meetings with FKO, the most recent, uh, this afternoon. Some very positive results of those meetings. Uh, for the, the after-school program has begun and is off to a very good start. Uh, numbers are up substantially in a number of schools. Uh, for example, we have 80 at the Carroll in the after-school program, uh, and we have increased numbers in just about every after-school program that we run. The surveys have come back for the, uh, before-the-bell program, and those are also encouraging. Um, in five of the seven schools, uh, we have enough students for programs, and that would be every school except the West and the Burke. Uh, the West has, uh, eight, uh, and the Burke has, uh, nine, I think, or it might be eight and eight, something like that. Not enough to run program individually at each school, but enough to possibly combine them, and we have already explored that. Uh, the problem is, we can get the kids there. Uh, we can, I mean, the parents can get the kids there, and we can get the kids back to whatever school we, we need to get them back to, but right now, we don't think we can get them back on time, and that means that they would miss the first 10 minutes of every day, and we won't do that. So we're trying to find a resolution to that, and, uh, right now, we will not open a Burke or a West before-the-bell program until and unless we find a solution to that problem, or until and unless more kids enroll to make it worthwhile to, um, uh, begin a program there. However, the other five schools, uh, the lowest number is 16, and the highest number is, uh, in the 30s for the before-the-school programs. So all the other five schools, uh, the Carroll, uh, the Brown, uh, the Welch, the Center, and the McCarthy will all run before-the-school programs, and we have given the go-ahead this morning to advertise for staff. The principals are very much on board with having their own staff, uh, be available for that program, and they will work out, uh, whatever time, uh, small time, um, complexities they may be at the end of the before-the-bell program and the beginning of school. Um, so we think we will have both teachers and paraprofessionals apply for the staffing in those schools. Uh, we will have at least two in each school, as was discussed this morning, and possibly in the schools that have a larger enrollment, possibly three. Uh, FKO will hire a before-the-school coordinator, uh, so we will not only have an after-school coordinator, we'll also have a before-the-school coordinator, which is excellent, and, uh, we're on our way. Um, I do want the community to know, because I know that there are parents anxiously awaiting the beginning of the, uh, before-the-bell programs. We don't think that we will be up and running much before November 1st. Uh, November 1st is our, uh, last target date. We hope to be up and running by, uh, the middle of October, but it could be as long as November 1st, and much of it depends upon staffing, quite frankly. Um, I think the, that FKO's already done a good job in planning what the day would look like for the before-the-bell program. I don't think that's the issue. Uh, the issue is strictly getting enough staffing in place and getting them trained. There is a second issue, and that is licensing. Um, just because FKO has a license for the after-school program at a particular site, they need to apply now for before-the-school programming, uh, license at the, at the same site. In order to do that, a gentleman from the state needs to come down and certify that the sites are, uh, uh, secure for a school event, just like they did for the after-school program, and he or she will not be around for at least a couple of weeks. Generally, it takes two weeks to get an appointment like that, so that's also a mitigating factor. And the third factor is that our own, uh, building permits, um, have to be, we have to make sure that they're up to date because along with the paperwork that the, uh, FKO has to submit for before-the-bell programming to the state, uh, they have to also submit a copy of a building permit and fire protection permit. So, uh, we're off and running, uh, we're gathering up all of that information, we will be applying for the licenses as soon as we possibly can, we'll be getting the person down from the state to certify the buildings as soon as possible, and all the while, we will be hiring staff. So I will have updates for you regularly as we move along. I've asked for updates from FKO, uh, at the end of each week to see how we're progressing in all of those areas, and then I will forward that information to you in my Friday emails. Um, but we're, uh, we're moving, and everybody was very positive and happy, and, uh, we've been able to even service the, uh, kids at the West in the after-school program who wanted to go to the McCarthy. Uh, we've been able to do that for a very, very small amount of money, which FKO has graciously, uh, agreed to pay for. So, uh, we're very pleased with that, and, um, the parents that were most concerned, there were a couple of parents that were most concerned, if you know about that, are, as far as I know, very happy.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Levine. Comments, questions? Mrs. Coughlin?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of questions. I believe on the minimum amount that we had, uh, agreed upon before the bell was 10, correct?
That is correct.
So in regards to the West and the Burke, where they're at eight and nine, can we put out, uh, possibly a connect ed? Maybe that paperwork was lost with the 20 other pieces of paper that go home first week of school?
Yeah, and I did put out a connect ed, a blanket connect ed to everybody a couple of weeks ago, and that did generate some enthusiasm, new enthusiasm for numbers. Uh, I can do the same thing, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, because we're only off by two in one school and one in the other, we could probably get the program going with, maybe just a reminder. The other question was, um, the hours. Have we established in regards to the custodians and for snow removal and such, if what do we want to allow them to enter the building?
Yes, I, I think that we said, 7:15. 7:15, and it would run until 8:45, I believe.
7:15. But we also establish, I know that we were talking before about breakfast, and we've advised them that we do serve breakfast. Have we concluded that we will still be providing breakfast during those times?
That is correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Hockman?
Um, yeah, my questions regarding FKO aren't about the morning program. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we are going to, or FKO is going to be providing services earlier in the afternoon, early to these days.
Yes, that's all taken care of. That's in the contract. Yes.
And that's all set up and ready to go?
Yes. Um, speaking of which, if I may, Mr. Hockman through the chair, um, they will be operating on the Jewish holidays even though the rest of the schools will be closed and the rest of the building will be closed, and they'll also be operating Election Day. So, uh, parents will be taken care of. However, um, on Election Day, the, all schools are closed and all students, uh, do not come to school, including our early childhood program at the McCarthy. The Little Tanners program, um, has been in session on Election Day, uh, and I have nixed that, um, this year. I'm not comfortable with the littlest among us having, you know, adults around for emergencies during that, that day, plus, um, we have people coming in and out of the high school for voting. So, uh, Little Tanners, for anybody interested, including my own family, there will be no Little Tanners on Election Day.
That leads me to my second question, is we have a, a list of paid closures that doesn't, uh, from the FKO, it's going to be exhibited, appendix B of their contract, that's like it, um, and that does not encompass all the days off that we had on our regular school calendar. Will they be operating for days that are not listed in this appendix?
To the best of my knowledge, but, uh, I will check that out for you.
And lastly, with regard to that appendix, um, the last two items listed is QRIS, and I don't know what that means. I don't know if you can.
I'm curious. And I'd be curious to see what, what that means.
Yeah, I don't know what it means.
QRIS.
The last two items listed, November 11th and April 14th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Coughlin?
QRIS is the Quality Rating System for Early Childhood Education, and there's different levels, um, and you, you try to move up those levels, and what happens is generally this sheet is given to vouchers, and the state will pay for these, and they allow, um, voucher allows early childhood centers to close, um, two days for QRIS training so that they can increase their level of quality.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Levine or Mr. Nica? Mr. Levine or Mr. Miko?
Through the chair. Dr. Levine, would transportation be available for West students, McCarthy and Burke, or is it just, do they have a choice between Burke and McCarthy after-school?
So, the after-school program?
Yeah.
I think we have set it up for the McCarthy only.
Okay, not the Burke.
Not the Burke, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Miko?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Levine, just a little clarification on the days that FKO is operational, the schools are closed, would they be at a, at one school, or?
No, they'll be at their regular schools. Custodians are working those days.
And would that include the, if, I believe, November nine, November eighth is Election Day, and if we are up and running, would that mean that before-the-bell would also be available, that time slot, just for parents who are working that day?
I haven't figured that out yet, that's a good question. I'll get back to you on that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the continued business is a letter to City Clerk, Tim Spanos, regarding Election Day needs. Anybody want to comment on that? Mrs. Dunn, is that you?
Yeah, actually, I think the most part, this is in here for the information of the school committee members. This was just in response to our decision at a subcommittee liaison to provide a written list to the city clerk for necessary coverage or requested coverage of police on Election Day. And one item in here that is interesting, I would like to thank Dr. Levine and Marge Macarelli, they had polled the principals at our request, just to see who needed specific times for coverage of police, not dedicated to the duties of the election, but for the school department use. And the list came through, it was very thorough, very interesting, and one of the items that did come up was, even though there's no voting at the Brown school, they requested some help with traffic control, and it was a point that was very well taken and forwarded on. Most of this, this was all for the primary election, which there weren't any issues, and there certainly wasn't a big rush on voting that day. But of course, with the November election, which is probably going to be overwhelming, these offices are not necessarily needed because we don't have classes. This is all for the protection of the parents and the pedestrians and the school children. So, it's good because it gives Tim a guideline to use for timeframes when school needs traffic assistance or all-day assistance. But I did think it was, it was nice that it came out in that, in the list that Marge provided, that the Brown school actually needed some coverage, and honestly, I hadn't thought of that. I don't think any of us really thought about the schools, other than those that have polling in the building that day.
Thank you. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, Dr. Levine, on that letter that we received, I'm curious, does Kylie in the West don't need any assistance on police? Personally, I would, I feel a little safer and just, I would feel better if we did have someone there. Just wanted to...
We have, Kylie, I don't think would need assistance. We have an easy route in for both wards, full, the ward and the precinct. It's in the gymnasium. We do have an officer on duty, at least one, and I think that the proximity to where the voting is, to where people are coming in, it's, I just don't think it's an issue there. I certainly will re-explore that with Tom at the West. He didn't request anybody, but I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Hocken or Mr. Rosignol?
Thank you. So, through you, Ms. Dunn, I think you chaired this committee, I don't know if you authored this letter or from Dr. Levine, but we're talking about this type of additional assistance on days when school is in session and needs a lunch break, right?
Yes, yes.
And to either one of you, I don't know, we put this together, but is there, it's a two-part question. One is there, have you developed a cost associated with this? And secondly, who is expected to bear the cost?
Well, I haven't, through the chair, I have not put a cost associated with this, and I think the, who's expected to bear the cost would be a discussion between me and the chief.
So, since we don't have...
And the mayor, of course.
How, since we don't have any urgency for this, because this Election Day, we don't have school, so we don't need this added protection. By the way, this is great work, and I think that this is thoughtful and good stuff, but could we perhaps put this into finance and figure out the costs and who's going to bear those costs before it goes to the Election Commission and before it gets to the city council, I think ultimately is, we're ultimately more in luck? Just so that we can have a complete idea as to what we're asking for and looking for, and who's going to be responsible if we need to create a finance room or a budget for it, or if the city's going to pick it up or whatever?
So, through the chair, that will be quite easy for me to do, get you not only, get you not only the information as to the cost, but I'll have discussion with the mayor and the chief about who's going to pick up the cost, and I can get that information to you directly, and then if you want to call a subcommittee meeting to discuss it, that's fine, that's up to you, if that's all right.
Yep, well, that's fine. So, through the mayor to Ms. Dunn, can we put this off for another meeting so we can get that information before we send it out? I don't know if it was your intent to send it to Mr. Spanos or...
Oh, actually, it was already sent. This is, this is after the fact. This was, this was a letter that was generated pursuant to our subcommittee meeting. We met with the city councilors on their side on the liaison, and what came from that meeting was that Mr. Spanos would like a list of the specific areas that the school department wanted police coverage. So, that, to do it properly, I requested that Dr. Levine ask the principals what they would like in each building, then was given the list fitted to this letter. The letter, actually, the letter got approved at the subcommittee meeting because it was, I had left any particulars blank. It listed its schools, with the exception of the Brown, and then listed a couple of general topics of, you know, entrance and dismissal for traffic, and then those times were filled in for the schools that wanted it. So, once I had that information and filled it in, then this letter went to Mr. Spanos, and he was putting together the requests for details, because he, he gives that to the chief of police, they meet and determine the hours for the police details. So, this all went to Mr. Spanos, and really, I think it's probably useful for him for future reference, you know, going forward, to give him some guidelines on what people were looking for. And it could change, you know, there may be someone who wants something different going forward, I don't know. But to be perfectly honest, I just thought that the city was taking care of that cost, especially for some of the schools where they were just looking for traffic assistance. I don't even know if they had to deploy an actual police detail there, or if people were just assigned there at those various hours, because I know a detail normally is, you know, a four-hour time period at least. This, I think a lot of it was being taken care of through the course of their daily schedule, that, okay, you're on area such and such at this time and this time, make sure you're at such and such a school for traffic assistance. But I know that he'll, he'll use it to formulate his next plan. It's not a bad idea to always stay in touch with them. He's been very good to work with anyway, I know you've said that, Dr. Levine. So, I don't think they'd be using it for the November election. It really is, you know, in here for, you know, just for everyone else's, what am I trying to say? It probably could have gone under communications, but it's retro, it's not forward. So, it's already been, it's already been sent and received by Mr. Spanos.
So, thank you, Ms. Dunn. I, I'm a little concerned about that, because there's some issues in here that I just, I'm not familiar with the PB Police Department contract, and I'm not familiar with the staffing that Chief Griffin or his staff puts out, and I see that many of the concerns at several of the polling locations, which are schools, deal with traffic, and I understand that, and I think that this is a good area to address. But I don't know if having an additional police officer at the Welch, which is the school I'm looking at right now, from eight thirty to nine AM to help with traffic in the morning, which is a good thing, I don't know if that requires a four-hour detail. And then I see that the after-school dismissal is another area of time that we want some assistance with an additional police officer, and that's from two forty to three ten, so it's not even within a four-hour window, if there is a four-hour minimum for an additional detail. So, there could be, and I don't know, I'm not, and I'm not trying to scare things up here, I just want to, would like to know if we're looking at an additional eight hours, potentially of overtime, for a police officer to work for thirty minutes in the morning and thirty minutes in the afternoon to assist in traffic at a particular school. And the police is certainly, certainly entitled to whatever rate they bargain for through collective bargaining, I don't have any issue with that, but I'd like to know if we're talking about, as you perhaps suspect, that it might be an officer that's already on shift, that would be in the area and would be able to assist at a particular school, or if we're talking about adding an extra three hundred bucks for each school for traffic. And if that's the case, we're talking a few thousand dollars, and who's paying for it? And that's something I'd kind of like to know. You know, I don't think we're talking about a hundred dollars here. So, Mr. Dr. Levine indicated that he's able to get that information, and appreciate it that you report back.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosignol.
This is Kylie in your subcommittee. Now...
No, actually, I'll be honest, I, the letter completed the work of the subcommittee at that point, it was putting it back to Mr. Spanos, and he was handling everything. So, I honestly don't know what took place that day. I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear about any problems, and just in talking with him, it just seemed as though a lot of the things with traffic would be happening, would be taken care of during the course of the day on regular police business. It wasn't like they were going to assign an officer there for those times. So, I don't think, I don't think we're being charged, I'll be honest, I thought they were paying. So, you know, when he said he could take care of it, because he works with the chief on, on deployment of the police, so I thought it was just the court, in the course of their expenditures for, you know, for their duties. I don't think that any police officers were assigned all day at any of the schools, other than perhaps one, but I don't even know if that took place. I really don't know, it was just that he wanted to know what, what the school department wanted, so right now, I would say it's, subcommittee, what do you think? I think we, we did what we had said we would do, and, you know, we will follow up, definitely follow up and see if it worked, but I don't think there were any, any big issues, and I don't think there's any cost at this point with such a small election.
Thank you, Mrs. Cuthbert?
Thank you. So, I'll just tell you that in the past, we had done this survey before, we had polled all of the principals to see what they had needed, and we had come up with a plan, and we had given that plan to Mr. Spanos, and it was followed through, and then eventually it wasn't. And the cost of any additional police or any other services was not in our budget, nor should it be. And I don't think it was a full detail rate, it was just a regular, you know, traffic type of issue they would come by, just on a normal shift. So, we're, you know, we've been through this before, it's not our cost, nor should it be, I don't expect it will be. It's fine to remind them, but I do recall meeting at that meeting, and Mr. Spanos just said, "Let us know what you need, and we'll take care of it." So, I think it is on the city side, I'm almost positive that it's not going to...
Yeah, that's language that made me think they were paying.
Yeah.
I'll remind them of that language.
Yes. We'll check the tape.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miko. Through the chair, Ms. Dunn, so this is, it's subject to change, this is, this really just addressed the primary in September, but going forward, I mean, certainly we can find out more detail, and certainly things, you know, change just prior to elections and things like that, so this isn't anything that's going to be set in stone going forward, at least that's my understanding.
Actually, that was mine, too. It's an evolving process.
Thank you, Mr. Miko.
Through the chair, Mrs. Dunn, and just to clarify, this, this won't, this doesn't take place for November eighth's election, because students aren't, aren't session, schools are closed, or...
Although, I, I assume there is, new professional development that day this year? Normally, we do, we have a professional development that day. So, I would say, you know, if the time, like arrival time or dismissal time, where there was going to be a traffic crunch, if teachers were at one specific building, then this might come into play. It's really just guidelines of difficult times on the school property or inside the school building, and the principals thought that we need some specific assistance. But yeah, I mean, it really was more for the primary.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item is the regular school committee meeting schedule. I think we had some discussions about some dates at the last meeting, and I think we're going to try to finalize a schedule for this upcoming school year, and that's been presented to us. Any comments, Mrs. Dunn?
Yes, thank you, the, the schedule looks fine. I would like to say, I think it's wrong to have the student advisory board appear at six thirty before, basically before a school committee meeting. The student advisory council is, it is an actual body that is really powered by law to meet with us, and I believe that we should meet with them in the body of our meeting, and that we should have those students arrive. If our meeting starts at seven, they should be a part of that meeting at seven o'clock. I think it's an important piece of, of their position as student advisory board members, and I think that we should move them into the regular portion of our meeting and not to put them before a meeting. We usually do have subcommittee meetings before the meeting anyway, and having the students appear and speak, it's important that they be able to address the full board, even though I know the full board would be there at six thirty, but our, our meetings traditionally now will start at seven, that's when the advisory board should be, I mean, my...
Thank you. Mr. Miko, then? Mr. Hocken?
First of all, I agree with Ms. Dunn, and I would even be welcome to having the student advisory be part of our agenda, and not, not kick it off, but maybe somewhere after into the meeting, but I think you're right, six thirty is too early for them, they have a lot of activities, they have a lot of homework, many of them work outside jobs, and they come from sports and a lot of other things, so I would wholeheartedly support that. With regard to the calendar that's before us, I appreciate the April twelve and October twelve meeting dates. I do recall that we did talk about Election Day, November eighth, and I think, I thought it was agreed that we would meet on November ninth that week, to allow for people to celebrate, hopefully, with some candidates who were, I don't know, running for election on November eighth, and give us enough time to be expensive time friends as well, but we did too.
That was my memory, so...
Yep.
Commenting for the comments?
I think a motion to adopt the calendar as drafted, with the exception of the November eighth meeting, which will be held on November nine, and have the student advisory council join us at seven, at seven PM on the meetings in which they are participating.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Hocken. Second, to Mr. Rosignol. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes.
Mr. Rosignol?
Yes.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hocken?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Cuthbert?
On the schedule, I just wanted to remind, and maybe we could get scheduled in there to, I think we're due for like an executive session to review past minutes. We usually turn them out every six months, I think it's been a while, so maybe if we could schedule something in there, Mr. Mayor, at a time that's convenient for you, while it's in front of us, just to put it in your head.
You're absolutely right. Why don't we plan as a group for executive session at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh? We're looking at six, six thirty, I'll reach out until, you know, but I know we have a few items, and I think this is an important one to bring up at that time, so. If the committee can plan on the executive session prior to the regular meeting, actually, it'll be six, our regular meeting's at seven, so why don't we plan for six o'clock, executive session, seven o'clock, for the regular school committee meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Where will we meet here? Do we have a...
There's a, there's a nice meeting over right next door.
We have one over there, that's where we...
Okay, thank you. Our next item is public participation. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, the mic... If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, the microphone is open. Just looking now, if somebody does like to speak, like to speak. Could I ask one of the committee members to step aside just for a moment? At the next meeting, we'll have a, we'll have to have a microphone available for the public, but... Great. Thank you, Charlie. Please, welcome, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Kina Daniel. I am from 129 Monona Street. I just wanted to thank this group for the recognition of the before-school program. I'm a member of the parent advisory board, and it was an issue that we brought forward and with the help of Mrs. Dunn. And it was, it's just amazing to see that we had a survey go out, we had the public responses, and we were able to get to this point. So it was really incredible to see that happening and to see that change happening. And I think the parent advisory board was really used in the way that it, you know, intended to be. And it's an issue near and dear to my heart as a working professional. It's absolutely something I'm gonna take advantage of. So I was very happy to see that the McCarthy School was one of the schools that did make the numbers. So I just wanted to thank everyone and just say that it really does make a difference for the parents.
Great. Thank you. Really appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and, and sweep? The microphone is open. Okay, thank you. Next, we will go to superintendent's report. Dr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The exciting part of the agenda, of course. Say that.
I did.
Got that? Before I turn, turn this over to Dr. Charette and Ms. Martek, I would like to thank Todd Bucy, Jared Haas, and Chris Stone for setting up the sound system here tonight. I'd also like to thank Jared for, you see the display monitors? He has the welcome and the agenda app for us, and thank you very much for that. I'd like to thank my custodian at the family, Dave Ressler, for lugging all of this equipment over here. Thank you very much for that. For those of the community that will be tuning in to watch this on tomorrow night and future nights, this is not going out live. And the reason it's not going out live is because one of the things that we haven't been able to do quite yet is to get the wiring done for public access television. We're working on that, and we hope that maybe by the next meeting or the meeting after that, we will be fully live again. So our apologies on, on behalf of the school committee that we're not live, but we will be very shortly, as soon as Comcast and public access television can get together with people here and finalize those, that wiring. I also wanna pass out, committee woman, Carpenter, asked for an update on the condition of school boards in, in our school system. I have that information. You'll note that --
Through the motion. Seconded. Motion by Mr. Rosigal, seconded by Mrs. Cappella, all in favor.
You'll note that there are at least three school, three schools that don't have a school board. They may use portable. I don't have the information on that. And the Welch school board hasn't worked in fifteen years. So I'm assuming that we can count that as a no. The other information that I wanted to pass out to you is the latest and greatest class size figures.
Motion received. Motion received by Mr. Rosigal, seconded by Mr. Miko. All in favor?
And you will see that the, again, due to your efforts as a school committee and your insistence on low class sizes throughout the school district for the benefit of kids, you can see that our class sizes are very good, whereas competitive, if not better than anywhere in the area on the North Shore. There may be one or two blips where, for example, there's a, the kindergarten classes at the McCarthy are a little too high for my liking. I would have liked to have added a kindergarten teacher, but there's no room. So we talked about alternatives, and we just decided to leave it as it is. Right now, they're 23, which isn't terrible, but I'd rather have it at 18. So you'll see that the work that you've done over the last few years to ensure low class sizes has, has paid great benefits, and I believe great benefits for kids. So thank you very much for staying committed to, to those low class sizes. And before I go on, I'll answer any questions that you might have on either of the pieces of information that I passed out. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Charette. Dr. Levine, on the enrollment form, it says open enroll, there's, there's one line, and then it says open enroll 16 to 17. What's the difference between the two lines?
One line would be open enroll that have been there all along, and 16, 17 would be additions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like to turn, if I may, I would like to turn this over to Dr. Charette for his
Thank you, Dr. Levine. You received, Neil Packard, a, a latest personnel report. Once again, as far as our professional staff, we're pretty much fully staffed, and we're still looking for some paraprofessional positions. And that is pretty much as far as this report is. There's no whole lot to add to it, to be honest with you. I'll take questions on that if you have it, but then I really wanted to move to, to one other thing tonight.
Mr. Rosigal?
I just have one. How many current paraprofessional positions do you have open?
Seven.
And where are they located throughout the district?
They are located, one at the Brown, one at the Burke, one at the Carroll, one at the Center, and then three at the, at the Higgins.
I'm sorry, through the chair. How many of those are full-time positions, and how many of them are part-time?
The kindergarten areas are half-time positions, so that would include the Brown, the Burke, the Center, and then the three positions at the middle school are 30-hour positions.
And last question on those three 30-hour positions here at the Higgins, have they been offered to current part-time employees?
Everybody has had an opportunity to bid on, on those positions, and now they've been, they were advertised for a while, but they're actually into the public somewhere. Hopefully, we will fill those very, very soon. I know the principals have been aggressively searching for candidates, and we should be filling those very soon. But the, the good news here is obviously that at least the teaching staff has been -- We have a couple that are listed as, as, as being open, but quite frankly, at this point, we're getting very close to filling those, so they're, they're not really, should not be really considered open at this point, because the principals have done their interviewing, and it's just a matter of getting the paperwork finished. And so we're, we're in good shape as far as hiring.
Thank you.
Thank you. Only other thing I wanted to mention tonight is, is we are in the process of, we, it's really myself and Barbara McCarthy are in the process right now of investigating different applications, computer applications that we can utilize in order to onboard people as, as we go through the hiring process. Right now, if, if you were to come back, if you went and attended the PIB school department 20 years ago and you came back today, you can see a similar process that we could use 20 years ago. And what I really wanna do is get to the point where we're able to take advantage of the computer, computer technology that we have available to us. So we're starting the process of, of looking at different computer applications. I was on a webinar this afternoon, going to a workshop on, on Friday, and investing in other companies as well. Over the next six to eight weeks will give us time to talk to the companies, go up to schools that are currently using the systems, and hopefully, what we hope to do is, I'm following, in hopes of increased communication across various departments. When we do hiring, it doesn't just involve human resources. A principal or supervisor who's doing the hiring makes the recommendation, human resources, sends us the paperwork, but then, you know, it travels through the business office, payroll, back to, back to HR, over to the superintendent, and it is, it's, it's just a real long paper trail, so we wanna cut into that so that everything is done electronically. It also should allow for a speedier process and, and make things a lot more available and a lot quicker in terms of real time. We hope to obviously decrease the use of paper, save a few trees while we're doing the, this hiring process. And it, it could, now, this would depend on what we wanna do, but it could also allow for electronic storage in the cloud, which would save a lot of, and make things a lot, a whole lot more accessible to those who need that information. So that, that's the process we're following right now. It'll be a six to eight week process. I'll be making the recommendation from superintendent, along with budgetary implications, because there will be some budgetary implications to this if we go forward. And hopefully, before Thanksgiving, Dr. Levine will get that report.
Good.
Thank you. So through the superintendent before Ms. Martek comes on board, I'd just like to, and I know he's gonna get angry at me for this, but thank Dr. Charette for bringing our human resource area along with Barbara McCarthy into the 21st century. I think the last time it was shaken up like this, the Plum Express was still running. And it's, it's time for us to organize our operation. We're a 6,000-student, 1,000-employee district, and it's time. So thank you, Charlie, for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Rosigal. Thank you. With all, with all of that said, I know we had this discussion previously regarding putting all of our files, both city side and school side electronically. I know, Mr. Mayor, on the city side, I'm sure you're busting at the scene as far as paperwork goes and files, because, as, as you put it so well, only, you know, half of the stuff we're still doing architically and not moving to an electronic age. So with your recommendations, is that the direction that we're moving, both on the city and the school side?
Through the chair. That's a separate, that's a storage issue?
To me, they both go hand in hand.
They, they do.
Because eventually, you're taking an electronic file of a person in this area, and eventually you need to store it somewhere.
That's correct. But what, what we're, what you're talking about is a much larger operation, and it's to take every piece of paper that we have stored, either in special education, human resources, the business area, and take, and create a computer file instead of a paper file. That's a significant investment, and I know that the mayor supports it, and it's actually on my agenda to talk with the mayor about on Thursday morning when we're meeting. So the answer is that we're continuing to pursue that, computerizing all of our files. It's a matter of when, how, and where, and, and the funding source for that.
And I'm sorry, last question through, through the chair, to Dr. Levine. I know we had mentioned this in the past, and what was the dollar figure that you came up with?
Just for the school side, it was about a hundred and, they had come down from 190,000 to 160,000. You know, the, the city is probably at least the same size, if not bigger, so it's, it's probably a, a good 350,000, $400,000 in, in currents.
So for a $400,000 investment, which is a considerable size of money, if you look at the storage and the space-saving capabilities that that will have, not only on the school side, but on the city side, I think that's a matter. I really do. Both in expediting processes, because right now, it takes a million days to, to do anything. The storage of the files, somebody going to retrieve those files, trying to find where they are, both on the city and the school side, it's just an enormous burden that I think could be alleviated pretty well.
Plus all the money that we'll save through the auction of a file cabinet.
Someone have one. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Martek will, uh, that cleanup tonight. You know what that's in reference to?
Yes.
That's not stretching, so you might want to move over. I'll get out of your way.
So you say that the best for last?
Absolutely. No question about it. Certainly wasn't Charlie.
So I'm pleased and proud to report on the science curriculum progress. A little background, we've been preparing for the new state's, Massachusetts Science State standards that were just released, and we knew, the beauty public schools knew that we needed to update our resources and stay current in our curriculum practices. So a team of 33 teachers and administrators, made up of pre-K to 9 teachers, came on board to create, inform a science curriculum team. This team listened to and saw multiple vendors, and they reviewed all digital and textbooks, resources and materials. So I'm gonna take you through briefly the elementary, middle, and the high school. So at the elementary level, where we currently are, we've decided to pilot two publishing companies. This would allow us to make an informed decision on what is good and best for us through populations. So the two publishing companies that the teachers, our committee chose are Foss and Pearson. So 13 teachers in the district are piloting Foss, and 13 are piloting Pearson. This alone collaboration in and amongst grade levels and in buildings of all elementary schools. So they're paired up with someone. So a second-grade teacher is paired up with another second-grade teacher. They're emailing, they're using Google Docs, sharing their experiences. So I will continuously meet with these teachers and get their feedback. I also wanna get feedback from students, so I'll be doing surveys and using a rubric to finalize our decision this year, piloting it. We also have a lot of professional development built in. Each company came to our professional development days this past, this summer. Also, we have, we're very connected with Professor John Pepinonis from Cambridge College, who is a science guru and keeps us updated with everything, and he's a wonderful resource. We are also offering, currently, it just started, an elementary science and technology graduate-level course. In 25 of our teachers are enrolled, and it begins this week, and we have a waiting list as well. So very exciting there. So that's where we are with elementary.
That course, I'm sorry, through the chair. That course, is that being held? Is that being held?
It's being held. Yes, through Cambridge College, but it's being held here at the Brown School. Yes. At the middle school level, with this big move to the beautiful building, the team decided that they wanted to make a purchase. They knew what they wanted. They were integrating curriculum in a scaffold with an approach, and so the teachers chose McGraw-Hill. They have access to both online materials as well as class sets of textbooks here. The professional development that McGraw-Hill is offering is outstanding. We have three full days plus monthly check-ins, plus instant responses to, like if you have a quick question, they respond immediately. So that has been very, very --
Sorry.
Mr. Rosigal?
Through the chair. So the Foss and the Pearson, do they currently align with the McGraw-Hill?
Yes. The alignment to the standards. So when we make our curriculum maps and our pacing, it will be fine because the language is similar.
Okay. So both of the elementary models are, both are similar in language moving into the middle school?
Yes. The thing with Pearson, I have to say this, the thing with Pearson, it's a more traditional, but great online resources, and Foss is a very hands-on approach, hits. And so we've got two different styles, two different approaches. That's why we're piloting. Yes.
Nice job, Charlie. Mr. Dunn?
Ms. Martek, at the Higgins, do the students have textbook or is it on their Chromebook?
They've accessed both. They, um, are all, it's still being, it will hopefully be done by Friday. Access right online, all, the entire, all the resources and the text. And there's also class sets in every cluster.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so they have access to both.
And do the teachers, when, do they use the Chromebooks as well in the classroom?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so everybody's --
So they get to see everything.
Oh, okay.
And at the high school, we are, we have purchased bio biology curriculum, and they chose Pearson as their resource. Again, they have online capabilities, they have texts as well, and they have had already some extensive PD, professional development, and so we are well on our way. I will continue to update you as we go, but what has made this process so successful was the thoughtful professional discussions and collaboration amongst the committee members and the departments. We've talked about vertical and horizontal, vertical and horizontal alignment. This team has really been very, very strong and wonderful to work with. Publicly, I'd like heartfelt thank you to them, and also to this committee for supporting and funding this very big project for moving forward. It's, it's very exciting to see kids enjoying science and wanting the hands-on learning. So I will follow up at future school committee meetings and let you know about the progress of our students and our science curriculum and resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Martek. Mr. Rosigal? Thank you. Through the chair. Just two follow-up questions. You said that this was basically K9, correct?
Correct.
So are we looking at any added science curriculum for, for 10 through 12?
That's a very good question. But current, what we currently have is pretty updated. The chemistry, I've been working with them, Mr. Hyatt. So the chemistry, the AMP. So the chemistry, the AMP, so pretty much everything is updated there. The biology was the one that was really, what needed to be updated and made coming. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, Ms. Martek, I just wanna thank you, Ms. Martek, for taking this on. We all know how much you do to take on this other piece with the science, and I believe social studies next year as well, without a curriculum director. And that's something that's gonna be on my wish list, and it'll be a future, is to get a curriculum director that help do some of the things that you do that really goes unnoticed, but it's very difficult work, so I want to thank you probably.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Okay, Mrs. Papadopoulos?
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Martek. Do you think, do any of these require purchase of book samples here or?
Let me think, we have three different companies going right now. So one does, but everything is online. If we choose to just print out certain things, if the teachers do not want the workbooks, everything is right online. So we can, say you're working on a unit ourselves, you can print out that unit if you choose to. So you don't need to buy the samples right here.
And all of these, you've mentioned the word online and text, so we've, we're looking at purchasing an actual book, but we don't need to have a book, if we can use it online?
Well, we decided to do, as we're transitioning, we bought class sets instead of one book for every single child. We bought class sets. So in the clusters here, so it has 30, 30 books in that cluster. Well, actually, we got 50 books per cluster. So we didn't purchase every single student, so we just got the class sets.
And that's here, and at the elementary, at the high school, all the way across, just class sets?
Well, at the elementary, we haven't just made that decision yet because we're piloting. And the teachers will let me know as we go, they're trying everything right now. But at middle school and high school, we decided on classes.
I'll yield.
Mr. Rosamond?
Just on that point, just as part of how we purchase, I would like to see that continue. Just ordering a class set and make that kind of our standard procedure. Just in case a student forgot their iPad or their mobile device that day. Now at least they have something that they can follow along, get to their work when they get home. So I like the fact that we're continuing to order class sets. It's not something that is a consumable, as Ms. Papadopoulos mentioned, it's not something that we can take at home, but it can keep the student engaged in case they forget their mobile device. So I think that's just a good practice to keep.
Thank you.
As we continue on with our curriculum work, I hope, because it's been such a positive experience, to continue this with social studies.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to Mr. Miko, then back to you, Mrs. Papadopoulos.
Through the chair, Ms. Martek, just one clarifying question. So the class sets, there will be 30 copies, and that would be for all, for that group. And then there'll be an online component as well that goes with that?
It's a hope, student wherever they go, they can access their books.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Papadopoulos?
I remembered what I wanted to say. So in the past, I know that when we've done any type of textbook adoption or any new curriculum, we've had an opportunity to view it and to see it. We've actually voted on it before. We voted as a board to adopt it. Now I'm wondering, do we not have to, or? When we did the math, we had a presentation, we got to look at them, to see them, and we haven't really done any of that with the science. And I was under the impression that we did need to vote if there was any type of new adoption.
Do you have a please? That's a great point. And it's one of the questions that's really never been finally answered, as to whether or not the adoption of curriculum is a school committee function or an operational function. And I think that what school committees have done across the state of Massachusetts since Ed reform is determine their own policy. So if you would like to see them, and if you would like to vote on them, we will be more than happy to bring them forward and give you a presentation on any of the things that we do. We have already purchased the biology, so we apologize for that, and I know you'll yell at me later for that.
I'll do it now.
Okay. But we have not done so with the pilots at the elementary school. And have we purchased middle school?
Yes.
So you can yell at me for the middle school and the high school, that's done. But you're gonna like it anyway, I can guarantee it. It's like chocolate ice cream. But we will bring, we will bring a presentation on even the ones that we have purchased, so that you can see them. And we will certainly come before you, before we've purchased any elementary school curricula, and give you a presentation on that, give you a chance to vote on that as well.
And I do appreciate, and I did hear when she said we've already purchased, we've already purchased, and it went through my mind. And I just want you to understand my position. We were presented in the past with, say, the math. We were given an opportunity to look through all the books, like I said, the presentations. As representatives of our community, we were also given the opportunity for people to come to us and tell us whether they liked it or not, whether they wanted to, and we can voice that for them. There's a lot of controversy over the math, and I think we all know that, and that's something that I will be asking for an update soon. So just as a committee member, I do like to see exactly what our children are looking at, what we're learning, what we're changing to, what we're purchasing. So in the future, you know, myself, I would like to continue that, how we've done that in the past. I realize that it's too late for the middle and high school, but moving forward, I would appreciate it.
Through the chair, may I make a suggestion that for the future, because I will not be here forever, although some people think I will, I would suggest that this board develop a policy on textbook adoption, if there isn't one already, that brings, that mandates this be brought forward. Is that already in there?
I didn't, I didn't check.
Okay. Okay. So that's another thing you can yell at me for. Are you done?
Do we have one additional question, Mr. Miko?
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Martek, just a quick clarifier. How many educational professionals, how many teachers, how many principals, how many, how many people were in this together?
33. 33.
33, okay.
And then it got more exciting. 33, and then the middle school teachers came back here, and I actually brought McGraw-Hill and Pearson here to the 18, 18 people in the science, in the science department. They came, then I went to the high school, they wanted the same thing. So they were all involved in the decision-making. So it was a great team effort.
Just one point through the chair, Ms. Martek, and the committee. I just feel as an educator myself, when you empower teachers to make decisions, the better teachers, and that's all I can say.
Thank you. Good comments. Next up, we got a second.
One, just, I really need to emphasize the tremendous amount of work that Kara did. The amount of work, time, and effort and energy that she put into this committee was extraordinary, and it just wouldn't have happened without her coordination and leadership. A second issue that I'd like to bring up is that when Kara invited me to one of the first meetings of this massive group, I was asked, is this really gonna happen, am I wasting my time? By some of the teachers, because apparently they had been involved in other efforts that didn't get anywhere. So I really have to emphasize again, through the good work that the school committee does, through your vision, even though you didn't get a chance to vote on it, and through the mayor. This would not have been funded under operational funds. We did not have the money. The mayor paid for this entire investment out of capital. And I can't thank the mayor enough for bringing this forward and for fighting for the school department. We were a massive part of his capital plan, and the city council for approving it and being a partner. So it took a lot of moving pieces to make this happen. You can all be proud of the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't wanna say, I appreciate those words, and I did wanna say that a lot of the movement on my end was inspired by this group, and I did wanna thank and recognize the city council, because it was a unanimous vote on all items. And as Dr. Levine said, I think more than half of the capital request was education-related. And a lot of it was curriculum and different building projects. So that was wonderful.
Okay, so we'll go to written communications. I don't think we have any today. We can move to subcommittee reports, education, Mr. Harkman?
Briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The special education subcommittee had an opportunity to meet last week. Mr. Miko, Mr. Rosamond, our attendants, as well as co-chairs of the community special education pack, and Ruth Groupie, our new special education administrator. It was a wonderful meeting, to quote Dr. Burnett, it was delightful. Ms. Groupie was wonderful, she was energetic, she was thoughtful, and she was very well spoken. It was really just a meeting to give us all an opportunity to meet each other, to meet Ms. Groupie, and to hear some of her philosophy as to what she plans on doing as the special education administrator. We do have a meeting scheduled for October 5, Wednesday night. The location is to be determined. We'd like to use this building. We weren't sure if the building would be available because of things that are going on here. But we hope the meeting will be held in this very room if possible. But we will post it, and of course we'll talk.
Thank you, Mr. Harkman. Next would be finance, any updates, Mrs. Papadopoulos?
Nothing.
Thank you. School safety?
Nothing.
Athletics and wellness, Mr. Rosigal?
I'll be setting up a meeting. I know Mr. Sheridan's been straight out with the startup of all fall sports. But I'm gonna be setting up a meeting with him probably over the next week to discuss current fields and their allocation, sport gate fees, and coaches' evaluations. So I'll be setting that up and probably voting. I'll ask Mr. Levine and obviously the athletic subcommittee.
Good.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Mayor. Back to health and wellness, I did wanna give a, an update on EpiPens. We do have one cabinet for every school. Some are up and some are not. We do not have any EpiPens as of yet. We are in the process of training every member of every crisis team in every school. Once they are trained and they have a certificate in hand, and they go to the nurse, and they show that they can actually use the EpiPen, we will submit the names to Sharon Cameron, who will then certify them and bring them to our school doctor, who will not write a script for the EpiPens themselves until all of that is complete. So we are in process, and I feel that we will, we're seeing light at the end of the tunnel. It's been a long, dark tunnel. This is to get EpiPens into the schools, and it's a really important effort. So I'm hoping that before the holidays, we will be able to say that EpiPens are up. We're still having trouble finding EpiPen cabinets. The EpiPen cabinets that we bought for $25, and I believe bought 10 of them a few years ago before I was here, they are now out of production. Nobody can find them online, nobody can find them through Amazon or eBay. Sharon Cameron has been looking everywhere for them. The new cabinets that have been, that have been manufactured to take their place, and I think this is all part of the EpiPen ripoff. You know, the EpiPen themselves have gone up to $600 because of the demand. The EpiPen cabinets have gone up to $300 from $25. And they look more like AE, yeah, 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 the cabinet for those devices, which are not appropriate for schools. So we're still seeking the, to find someone that has 20 or 30 EpiPen cabinets from the old days lying around somewhere. Sharon continues to work on that as do we. But I do think that at least the cabinets that we have available in each school will have EpiPens in them by the holidays. That's my take on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the quality and standards subcommittee met this evening prior to this meeting. The topic that we discussed was a specific dedication at the high school, and then we reviewed the dedication and naming process in general, so we went over some of those policies. We also discussed the need to have the fee structures and the usage of facilities reviewed. And that's actually gonna come up on the new business. My, my, my hope is that when I discuss that with you, it'll get referred to quality and standards. That's more of a timely matter that we do occasionally, and it takes some time. So right now, we have not got another meeting scheduled, but we're just working on the dedication and the naming process.
Good, thank you. Any updates, Mrs. Dunn, on city council advisory boards?
As you know, we have that letter, we should close out the matter of the police protectionary with the elections. That was with the liaison subcommittee. The parent advisory board will be Monday, September 26th, here at the Higgins, be the very first meeting of the school year. I know some of the PTOs had elections in the spring, some are currently having one in the fall. So all the members will be, will be invited to that first meeting. Dr. Levine's gonna be our guest speaker, and we'll be putting out an agenda soon for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And building and grounds, I asked Tim Healy to focus on this building over the last, in particular, last few weeks. So we are overdue for building and grounds meeting, but I will set that up. In fact, I'm thinking of doing that, if the committee members could make it at 5 o'clock on the 27th prior to executive session at 6. Because there are a couple important issues that I wanna start to discuss and get back in our minds. But I'll reach out and see if people can make it that date. New business, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Dunn. I know we have three policies to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said just a moment ago, the reason that I brought this forward, we have policies concerning community use of our school facilities, the facility use fees, and community use of school facilities. Those three policies should be reviewed and updated. In conjunction with that is the necessity of looking at our current fee structure, especially with this building. People who had rented space in the old Higgins will be seeking out to use space in this building. But I think a lot of other people are going to want to rent this building for many different uses, for performances in the auditorium, right on up to college classes. It's a very versatile building, it's going to be in high demand because it is absolutely such a big part of our community already. In the last couple of weeks, I know there have been a lot of requests coming through. So what I would like to do is make a motion that we request our business manager to look into the fees that we currently charge to determine, and come back to the full committee as to what you might recommend for specific fees. So I'll make that motion first.
You heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, second by Mrs. Papadopoulos. We're all in favor.
And then one of the other items that will be coming up is we do need to have a policy for the use of the technology and electronics in this building. Presently, at the high school, they have a policy there where a member of the staff, a trained member of the staff has to be the one operating the equipment in the auditorium. It's very important, but I'll be honest, I think here it's even more important because you wanna make sure that this equipment stays in good condition. We wanna make sure that if someone's, you know, working on the stage, that they, that they know what they're doing. It can get pretty complicated, and so much of it is computerized right now. We really have to make sure that it stays in the hands of people who know what they're doing. So I would like to ask that that matter be referred to the subcommittee on quality and standards to come up with a policy much like the one at the high school, but I actually think it does need to be a bit more specific at this level. I know at the high school, sometimes they have students who work on, you know, stagecraft, and they actually know how to operate the equipment. Here at the Higgins, you don't have that, because you probably will. I mean, let's face it, the kids know how to work these things better than we do. But presently, we don't have that. And we discussed it earlier at the subcommittee meeting, and I know Dr. Levine is working on something with, with the staff. So in conjunction with them, I'd like to see that go forward as well. So I'd like to make a motion that the, that the subject of, what should we classify him? That the subject of?
Management, management of the auditorium in the Higgins.
Okay. That it be referred to subcommittee on quality and standards, that will work with Dr. Levine and the staff on a policy, so that that's in place. It accompanies our facility fee use paperwork. And it puts any, any people who want to rent on notice of what's required. And in cases, it would be an additional expense, but I believe we need to do that to make sure that everything stays in good condition. These, the items here are here for our students as well as the community. But we want everybody to be able to use them, and we wanna keep them in good work. but we want everybody to be able to use them, and we want to keep them in good working order.
Great. Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, second, and Mr. Rosigal, I think we're all in favor of that.
Thank you.
All right, excellent.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add to that, Jared, when you do your research on, on this, I'd like to see some comparative pricing from schools that have been built recently that have auditoriums, because that'll give us an idea of how they upgraded their fee structure.
A couple of figures were raised, Mr. Rosigal?
Yeah, first, I'll be brief. Fee structure, remind, we have another topic. It's not really athletics, just for some of the new board members edification. Two years ago, when we built the field, the mayor put Beverly, myself and Jared on a committee to monitor the field and see how it's being used, come up with fee structures, see its utilization and move forward with that. We had a meeting with Jen Davis, the park and parks director, just last week, and I'll report more of this in building and grounds. But as far as usage goes, the only two groups that utilized that field other than school property was flag football and tackle football. We didn't get any outside vendors over the summer like we had anticipated, so I just wanted to be aware. The other thing that we're just going to look at is how that fee structure is currently, and if that needs to be modified. But I can bring it up on the building.
Thank you, Mr. Rosigal. Mr. Hocken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Dunn, the three policies that you have before, is it being reviewed or are they being updated? Or is it first reading or what are we doing?
No, no, these are our current policies. So they're just brought forward so that everyone knows what the current policy is, and then we'll take, the subcommittee will take a look and see if those need to be updated. I think some things need to be, I would say updated, especially with fee structure, but in conjunction with that, we do need that accompanying policy that we've never really needed it before, but I do believe we need it now for our use of the equipment. You know, we have, we've always had a policy that if you use the kitchen, you need to, you have to have one of the cooks there. Makes sense. The auditorium was kind of open, especially at Higgins, but now I believe we need to kind of quantify it.
I appreciate that, and I think that there might be some updates to this language, to the policies themselves, but I thought I was going crazy because I'm reading this, and then I'm reading my policy manual, and the language is identical, and I'm trying to figure out where the difference is, so thank you.
This was a brief call, but Jen asked you to commission a quarterback.
Okay.
Excellent. Wonderful meeting. Items for the next, Jen can handle the regular course. The next meeting will be Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, seven P.M.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.